Oh, that's the time of the meeting.
Gab's after gab. And you still got it three times.
My other daughter is graduating from Tufts Dental School this year. I have four. I have another one at Harvard. Now I have four. I have my son.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, September fourteenth. The time is six thirty P. M. And I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carterman, we please call the roll.
Trustee Cusamano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey is absent. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Support.
We do have two corrections, or changes, rather.
Motion to support with the two corrections after they're read? Thank you.
Item seventeen, there's a proposed tabling of number seventeen. Request to amend the approved fiscal year two zero two one. Community Development Block Grant ADA Ramp Program to J. S. S. Macomb in the amount of one hundred sixty thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents. And the proposed removal of number eighteen. Request to donate old broadcast media equipment.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as corrected?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, will the tabling of the item seventeen be with a date certain?
That's tabling goes to the next meeting, so it'll be next meeting.
Next meeting, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Who was the second?
That was me.
That was me. Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the agenda as corrected. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Any discussion on the bill run?
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions and I think a comment. In case any of the residents are wondering why there was an increase in uptick of two thousand five, fifty-five dollars in the legal expenses from the York Dolan Tomlinson Firm. It's my understanding, and I've been informed, that that's related to the Twenty-three Mile Road issue of the roof at Ringgela litigation. That the, um, the board had voted to file a nuisance complaint, and I confirmed that with Mr. Tomlinson, so I'm satisfied that the agreement with the township has been satisfied in, in excess of the eighteen thousand dollars because of the litigation expense. Uh, other than that, I had, um, also inquired regarding the fire equipment from Macomb County. At sixty-six hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents, that's pursuant to a contract which I received a copy of for dispatch services, I believe is, so the residents should be aware that even though we maintain the equipment, that charge is for, uh, the county's dispatch service. And, um, that's all I had. Oh, also on fire savvy consultants, that there's a consultant that's reviewing plans now and that that's, those costs, which is in the total amount of fourteen hundred dollars is being, um, is not being paid without reimbursement, but is reimbursed by the persons who are the subject to those properties being inspected.
That's correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusamano. Is there any other discussion on the bill run? Okay, hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, motion, is there a motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes from August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion on the previous meeting's minutes? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Nevers, to approve the previous meeting's minutes from August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to public comment. Anyone who wishes to make public comment, please make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. This is for agenda items only. Anyone participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand. I don't see anyone present. Ed, is there anybody remotely?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on from public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Discussion on the consent items. Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item seven, is a request to award the contract for manhole and catch basin repairs to Pipeline Management Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So move.
Board.
Mr. Johnson?
All right, good evening, board. Uh, so this agenda item, we have eighteen rear yard manhole or catch basins that need repair from infiltration. They're using the grouting method. As you can tell by the quote, it's all estimated because it's kind of hard to estimate when it's underground, so, or kind of hard to know the exact amount because it's underground, so it's estimated quantities. So that's why I'm asking for a little bit more, just in case I need to do a little bit more, utilize a little bit more grout to complete the, uh, the repairs.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion, or any questions?
Go on.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Are these manholes that, that people have adjusted or burned to grade up to alter them, or the manhole actually failing?
Yeah, so over time, they degrade, so like around the pipe, the material concrete will fail, so we need to either inject something to protect it, or if we can, may do it by hand, we'll do it, but these are a point where it's, you gotta dig up the yard, and in order to dig up the yard, we gotta remove fence, or do a lot of removal of pool, things near the pool, something like that, so it's less invasive to do this versus tearing up someone's property.
Do you see that in the future?
Yes.
Being a lot of?
Yes.
This is gonna continue?
Yes. How much? We don't know. It's year by year. I would say we average thirty to forty a year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions because of the section four point one F of the purchasing policy, which is not competitively bid. Have we ever used pipeline management before?
Yes.
And the, the, the work was done satisfactorily?
Absolutely.
All right. So I guess we don't need references, or we act as our own reference. Um, and was the, this contract reviewed by council?
It's not under, it's not really a contract that they're actually getting signed, it's just more of an agreement to, oh, this, I guess it was not, it was not reviewed by council, no.
Okay. Um, picking up on something, the question that I have now, uh, it worked out to be sixty hours, eighteen manholes, three point three hours, uh, or two thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Are we, are we guessing how much it will be and what happens if it's, requires more work than what's anticipated?
Well, that, that was kind of why I used the forty-five as the number. They, they reviewed all the manholes and catch basins based on what they saw, the amount of infiltration, and what their, their history of what they've used, that was their quantities they used from the past.
Okay.
But nothing's ever the same twice, so I just wanna, I want to be cautious just in case.
Did they inspect these eighteen manholes that are anticipated to be worked on?
They, they looked at them. They didn't go down actually and look, they kind of saw the infiltration, though.
All right, so it's capped at forty-five thousand. If there's, if there's anything more than that, then we'll be voting again.
Yes.
Correct. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cusamano. Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Oliver, to award the contract for manhole and catch basin repairs to Pipeline Management Company, Inc., not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Number, I, number eight, is a request to authorize the engineer, I, is to authorize engineering consultant to design the sanitary sewer trunk line along Twenty-five Mile Road. This would be east of Broughton to service the Town Center Village and Town Center Village North Site condominiums. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. The developer of two pieces of property on, on Twenty-five Mile Road, North and South, east of Broughton Road, uh, has to extend the sewer along Twenty-five Mile Road. That's a trunk line sewer. Uh, it's been the township's policy that the township's engineering consultant actually designed those because of all the work that has to go in to not only serving those properties, but also the entire service district for that particular trunk line sewer. So the, this developer has requested permission from the board to use, in this case, Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick to design that sewer. They will pay all the fees. They'll deposit money with the township to cover all the costs of that. Once the design is done, the plans will be turned over to the developer for them to receive bids and construct on their own. No township funds will be used. It will be completely, uh, developer funded. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin.
Just a quick question, if I may. Mr. Van Tiflin, after the project or in the, while the process, the project is moving forward, will the township still be inspecting the project as it's moving forward?
Absolutely. So the, um, A. W. would be working for us, uh, using money that the developer is depositing, but the township will essentially be in charge of the project. And then once it goes to construction, they'll pull a permit with the D. P. W., just like they would on any other, uh, development project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the engineer through the chair. Um, is, is it, the payment, this process that we're discussing, is this how it's usually standard operating procedure that the developer pays these fees?
Yes, before any design work would start, they would have to deposit the money with the township, and then as the bills come in, we would use those funds to, to, to pay the consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cusamano. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Oliver, to authorize the engineering consultant to design the sanitary sewer trunk line along Twenty-five Mile Road. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine, is a request to award the contract for the twenty-twenty-two pathway gap closure program to J. S. S. Macomb in the amount of four hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. On August thirtieth, the township received proposals for the twenty-twenty-two pathway gap closure program. Uh, we received three proposals. Uh, all of the contractors we have worked with before on closing, uh, pathway gaps in the past. Um, a review committee was set up of myself, Crystal Kozak from the township, and then the design engineer Kevin Ostrowski with Fishback. We've reviewed all the proposals and are recommending that the project be awarded to J. S. S. Macomb. Uh, I should note, J. S. S. Macomb is the, the same contractor that we've used for the last couple of years, and we're satisfied with their work, and the amount of the contract is four hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any other discussion or questions?
What question, if I may, Mr. Chair? Mr. Van Tiflin, this, uh, amount is in line with the approved budget for that item?
Yeah, it actually came in under what our estimate was, surprisingly, so, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusamano, to award the twenty-twenty-two pathway gap closure program to J. S. S. Macomb in the amount of four hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item ten, is a request to approve the purchase of a pickleball netting system from Superior Sports Unlimited in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Mr. DeCaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase a netting system to surround the new pickleball courts at Macomb Corners Park. We're recommending we purchase the system from Superior Sports Unlimited, Inc. for a cost of ten thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Superior Sports Unlimited is a Sourcewell provider. I've included the quote and confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Would it be fair to say the ten thousand four hundred and ninety dollars is the net cost?
It would be fair to say that.
Actually be unfair to say it that way. It is still yet accurate. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the purchase of the pickleball netting system from Superior Sports Unlimited in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Members, please vote.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was writing in my notes. Net cost joke, treasurer Gillette.
Well, if that was worth the ink.
Take me to court.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Moving on to item eleven, is a request to hire an appraiser aide. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Now's your time to shine, Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, board members. I'm requesting authorization to an extended offer of employment to Morgan Pankowitz for the appraiser aid position. This position was posted compliant to the M. C. B. A. agreement. Human Resources received six resumes for this position and interviewed four applicants. Interview team consisted of Tim Patterson and myself. And we are recommending to hire Morgan Pankowitz to the position of appraiser aide for proven contingent upon successful completion of all post offer requirements. The effective date of this hire could be this coming Monday, September nineteenth. This is a budgeted position. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to hire Morgan Pankowitz as our new appraiser aide. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the list is item twelve, is a request to promote to the position of fire captain. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Mr. Supervisor, board members, I request you to promote three lieutenants to the position of fire captain. The applicants completed an assessment through E. M. Co. on July twelfth. The candidates passing assessment were interviewed by the selection committee on August twenty-third and August thirtieth, as outlined in their I. F. F. C. B. A. The selection committee is recommending Lieutenant Stewicki, Lieutenant Dumas, and Lieutenant Bartz. If approved, the effective date of promotions will be this Monday, September nineteenth. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion?
I just had a question. Could either you or Mr. Tabaka elaborate a little bit on the selection process for this particular position?
You want to take that, Mr. Tabaka?
Yes, so, last, last morning, I mentioned, uh, E. M. Co. And E. M. Co. is a six-hour assessment, and this is all outlined in their I. F. F. agreement. Six-hour assessment, and then it goes to a committee, um, myself, supervisor Viviano, clerk Christie, fire chief Phillips, treasurer Gillette, the fire chief of Washington Township. And then after that, we elaborate, and then we made the decision based on our, our notes in the assessment center.
So no one portion of that is weighted any higher than the other, it's just kind of a overall consensus between their, you know, passing this assessment and their interview process. There's nothing like weighted higher than the other.
There's nothing written in the C. B. A.
There's no way to, there's no way to score it. It's just based on the interview process and the assessment center.
Okay.
My understanding is the E. M. Co. test is the barrier to entry to the interviews. So anybody passing, who doesn't pass the E. M. Co. test does not get interviewed, and those who do pass move on to be interviewed.
So the score of the E. M. Co. test may not matter, it's just a pass/fail to get to the interview process?
It's a pass/fail to the interview process.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee, was it Oliver or you? I'm sorry.
Uh, me.
Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Nevers, to promote lieutenants Stewicki, Dumas, and Bartz to the positions of fire captain. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to our new appraiser aide and to our new fire captains. Moving on to item thirteen, is a request to approve the purchase of the Civic Plus Media. This is going to be a sixty-three hundred dollar annual expense, but is prorated for the remainder of this year at thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-six hundred seventy-five dollars.
So move.
Support.
Roger?
Thank you. The clerk's office has been working with the supervisor's office to upgrade the township's capability to stream, record, and host meeting videos. The township currently uses two Civic Plus products, the Civic Engage website and the Civic Clerk Agenda Management System, which we're using here tonight, uh, for the electronic voting. Uh, Civic Plus, excuse me, Civic Media, Civic Plus Media will interact with the website and the agenda management software to create live or on-demand video streaming with agenda item bookmarks. Uh, C. P. Media can also be integrated with Zoom, YouTube, and Twitter. If anyone's been on the county's, uh, website, it's pretty slick in terms of the one-stop shopping, so to speak, for each meeting. Um, it'll display the agenda, uh, the minutes, when the minutes are eventually done, and the video, all on one, one platform with the bookmark, so you can scroll down to the agenda item, click on it, and it'll take you right to that portion of the meeting if you want, you know, a specific, uh, specific item. They are, so we'll be implementing a lot more of the functionality on the website with the, uh, Civic Engage website as it interacts with the C. P. Media, as well as the agenda management software. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. Uh, at the county, when I was a county commissioner, we had that, as you noted, uh, deputy, the, uh, that system, and it certainly does facilitate citizen, uh, research or citizen ability to, uh, zone in on or, you know, tab the area they want to watch of a meeting. It was a lot easier to have to sit through a two-hour meeting when they just want to find out what happened with a particular agenda item, so I do believe it's, uh, good for public access, and I think it'll improve citizen, uh, ability to understand what's happening in their community.
Agreed. Thank you, treasurer Gillette.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Is it anticipated that the meetings will be archived in perpetuity, or will they be deleted after a certain period of time?
Um, I believe we've been keeping the
One year, is that right?
We've been keeping the, the meeting videos for one year on the website.
What does the county do? Does the county keep them more than one year, do you know?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Cusamano. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusamano, to approve the purchase of the Civic Plus Media in the amount of a sixty, it's a six, ah, for sixty-three hundred dollars annually. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item fourteen, is a request to approve the charitable gaming license resolution for Neighbors United.
So move.
Support.
Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, board members. The township has received a paperwork from Neighborhood, excuse me, Neighbors United requesting that the board adopt a charitable gaming license resolution in support of their organization. This is a registered nonprofit entity, and they provided the necessary information to meet the requirements to be approved for this status. Uh, they have filed all the appropriate paperwork with the state and received comments back from it. This organization is run by one of our own firemen, uh, who was with us tonight, Joe Forney, and what they, he does is conducts a fundraiser, and the money that they raise, uh, goes towards firefighters who are, uh, battling cancer. And they also are going to use the profits to grow their organization. I'm able to answer any questions, if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair? I have a question of the, uh, the petitioner, Mr. Warren, if he is able to come up to the microphone. Good evening.
Mr. Treasurer, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. Recently, you conducted your annual walk to raise money for the organization. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you update us in how, how that went? What, were goals met? How did the walk go?
Uh, thank you for asking. I was going to wait for public comments, but if you guys are okay with me speaking now, I'll be happy to. Uh, as of today, we're at a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, we are still waiting on some checks to come in and some fundraisers that were done that we found out about, uh, that were taking place in Lansing. That was a surprise to us. Uh, we did finish with, uh, twenty-seven firefighters battling cancer. We always pick up a few along the way as the word spreads. Our goal was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We believe we're going to end up with one thirty to one thirty-five, so every firefighter should be able to get a five-thousand-dollar check. It might be a little lower. Uh, it does take a little while for the Facebook money to deposit, and until it deposits, we really don't have an actual figure. Uh, but we did want to thank the citizens of the township. They've been very supportive of our organization. The township board, you guys have been phenomenal. The fire chiefs are amazing. All the firefighters and our unions, both sides are, are amazing, and we, we can't do it without you guys, so we wanted to thank you, and I'll be happy to answer more questions.
I think it's us that owe you the thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very humbling.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the charitable gaming license resolution for Neighbors United. Uh, Roger, we call the roll.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that resolution is adopted.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Moving on to item fifteen, is a request to accept the Macomb County Tree Grant.
So move.
Support.
Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the township applied through the county for a grant for trees that, uh, was provided to the county by D. T. E. We, um, met with the county, both verbally and in person, and were recently awarded, uh, eighty trees, uh, up to a cost of a hundred and seventy-five dollars, average tree, that we can receive. We will have to match that amount in the form of care for the trees, uh, planting the trees, watering the trees, that sort of thing, as far as our match. And in some minor amount of materials we'll have to expend as well, like for bags that hold the water around the tree when they're newly planted. So sixty of the trees will be going, uh, in at Corners Park, lining the entryway to the park. So as you drive into the park, there'll be a rows of trees on either side that'll be growing up to sort of shade the entrance to the park and create a little bit more, interest in the, uh, in the park itself in general. The other trees will be used around township properties where we've got some dying trees and to also accent some of our other properties. So just like to, uh, get approval for us to accept the grant.
Thank you, treasurer Gillette. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to accept the Macomb County Tree Grant. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item sixteen, I believe.
Chair, I'd like to motion, a motion to postpone the quarter report till the next meeting. We are updating that report and would meeting, we are updating that report, and would prefer to give it next meeting when it's, although we're updated.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion to postpone?
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by trustee, Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to postpone the treasurer's quarterly report. Motion passes unanimously, so we'll pick that up at the next meeting. We also had items seventeen, which was also tabled to the next meeting, and item eighteen was removed, so that brings us to public comment. This would be for non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room, or if you're participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand. I don't see anybody present, anybody remotely.
No.
No, so we're going to move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido.
Just want to congratulate, congratulate the new appraiser aide and the three new fire captains. Congratulations on your promotion and new job.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Trustee Nevers.
I too would like to congratulate both, or all three of the fire captains on their promotion and on making the appraiser aide. New job here. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver.
Same thing, glad we got another appraiser to help. It's good, and congrats to the three fire captains now, that were lieutenants. And again, another shout-out to Mr. Warren. I can ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you wear out three pairs of shoes?
I only use one.
One pair?
A brand-new pair.
Are you advertising for that company now? I mean, you know, there's always an angle.
A brand sponsor.
Thank you again.
Turnouts here, we cover with sponsorship passes, like a NASCAR uniform.
Presented by Nike. That's it.
Trustee Cusmano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reiterate the same sentiments about the advancements of the employees to fire captains, and also congratulate the appraisal aide, appraiser aide for the advancement and hire. I also want to make a comment on item number eight. I want the residents to know that there's a fundamental question, that I had a whole series of questions on this, which we're all answering, including who pays. I want the residents to know that there's a political decision that's made in Macomb Township to have the developers pay for that sewer trunk line, including the plans and putting it in, and that, in my estimation, that is prudent conservative government. In other words, the existing residents are not subsidizing that extension of the trunk sewer line, and I'm proud to have voted in favor of that political decision to have the developers who are developing that land make that payment, rather than having it put on the sewer, water and sewer bills. And I want to congratulate the rest of the board members for being of like mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Trustee, or Treasurer Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like to point out or acknowledge, not only our new hires and promotions, but in going to the Neighbors United kickoff for Mr. Warren's walk, firefighter Warren's walk, it's incredibly heartwarming to see how many people are volunteering their time, their energy, money, donuts, everything that's involved in putting something like that together is not, did not look like an easy event to organize and fundraiser to organize, but watching everybody, how everybody came together at that event, and just estimating how much work goes into that, I mean, it looks like the walk is, it sounds like the hard part, when you're walking from one side of the state to another, but it looks like there's an awful lot of hard walking and working that goes into just even getting that far, and just like to congratulate Mr. Warren again, his organization, the chief, the firefighters that support the effort, and the community, and the businesses that come out and support it. I think it's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. And full disclosure, he was most excited about the donuts.
They left him unguarded when they started the walk.
Well, said, Joe, since you came, and I could say, you know, not only congratulate you on your walk, but, and I think I was talking to Trustee Lucido before you started, there's not that many purely selfless things that we get to be witness to anymore, and I would say your efforts are just that, and it's, it's an admirable, not just an admirable thing that you do, but the example that you set for your colleagues, for us, and for the entire community, and especially our children, is just something we can't thank you enough for. So, thank you for everything. Congratulations to our three new fire captains. I had the pleasure of sitting on that selection committee, and I am confident that these three gentlemen will be the type of leaders that will help this community in untold number of ways. Looking forward to everything that they're going to bring to our department. Congratulations to our new assessor, or assessor's aide. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adjourn the meeting. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.